Good evening. School board meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seber.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Fall.
Here.
And Mrs. Bresia.
Here.
Thank you.
Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Can I get a motion, please?
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board, the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Next on our agenda is superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford, will you please lead us off?
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Seberg and other members of the board. Good evening to you tonight and to everyone that has joined us here this evening. There we go. I stand before you tonight with announcements. We don't have any spotlights. You know, we just had our first day of school on yesterday, which was awesome, being able to see all of our students and our faculty is all here. So, family reunion is in effect for real. And so, it's been so great just being back and having everybody back with us. But tonight, I do have a couple of announcements that I'd like to share. Over the summer, you know, we've been sharing a little bit about some of our newest family members that have joined MCPS. And we have one tonight that I'd like to introduce. So, I'm going to ask her to come forward, Ms. Matia Johnson. Ms. Johnson, you can just stand right up there. Ms. Johnson is a new assistant principal at Osborne High School. She was most recently across the way at Osborne Park. And she also worked at Mount Vernon High School in Fairfax County. Her background includes serving as a family and consumer science teacher or fax teacher. And she also served as a lead mentor for teachers during her time in Prince William County. So, we believe this will serve her well as she supports the staff, the students, and the families at Osborne. And we're so excited to have her as a part of the Eagle team. So, thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
All right. So, next from the communications office, I'd just like to share an announcement about some information that recently went out, some transitions that we are making here in Manassas City Public Schools with some new communication tools. So, Ms. Garza can go ahead and pull that up for me. In July, we transitioned to some new platforms, you know, and there have been some things that we've been using since the pandemic. And I will tell you in reflection, I was just thinking about how 2020 seems like it was a long time ago, but in a lot of ways, not so long ago. And I just remember being on the back end and watching our staff do miraculous things and making sure that our students didn't fall through the cracks and that, you know, the platforms and the things that were necessary to continue teaching and learning, we were able to do that. And so, some of those tools have definitely been beneficial to us, but we've seen the need to kind of consolidate some things. And so, this is what we'd like to talk about tonight, especially with regards to our parents and our guardians, because some recent information has gone out. And we're excited about the opportunity to really streamline our efforts. So, first, I'd like to talk about the new website. We have a new website host and design. For those who may know, we've been with the previous company for several years. And even from a budget standpoint, you know, we had to kind of sit back and review, you know, how we were allocating funds and things. And so, I'm excited to see the fact that we have a brand-new platform. We are still the same website address, mcpsva.org, but as people travel to our sites, they will begin to see that we've begun, we've transitioned by migrating hundreds and hundreds of pages, actually, from the division side and from the school side. We've developed some video tutorials and things like that that will be available for parents as they try to navigate the new system, a portal for people to go in and to see some of the resources that are out there as they travel to the school pages and things like that. So, tonight, we're not doing a full-on demonstration of those tonight. We just wanted to let people know that as the new school year has kicked off, these are some of the things that they will see. As we do our back-to-school nights and things like that as well, we'll be having people on site, helping people jump onto some of the new platforms that have been made available to them. As we continue navigating through mitigating the things that we are building out, meaning the, you know, broken links and things like that, you have to understand that as we've moved from one platform to another, or one host to another, some people may look for things that they were familiar with in other places. And so, we want to, you know, encourage them to either contact their school or contact our office if it's something specific. But for the most part, our calendars and lunch menus and things like that are all out there for people to be able to feel fully informed as the school year has continued. But another component of the website is a new mobile app. And that is live in the Apple Store, App Store, and in Google Play. And the tagline that they say, "It's Everything MCPSVA in Your Pocket." I want to comment on that a little bit because one of the things that was a selling point for us is the fact that we are able to brand these products as Manassas City Public Schools. And in the past few years, people will have remembered having to use things like Remind or even though we use Schoology and Power School, you know, those things are vendor-branded. And now, the fact that we are able to have something that is branded as us is exciting to us. And it does feed from the website, all of the websites. And so, parents will be able to go on and follow the district, the division, but also to subscribe to their particular school or multiple schools if they want to, to get alerts. So, we want to encourage people, even as I continue on in this announcement, to go on to your App Store or to Google Play if you have Android, to download the app. And oops. Did I lose it? There we go. We have a short video that might play for introducing the app. I don't, let's see. There we go. Thank you.
Introducing the brand-new app from Manassas City Public Schools. It's Everything MCPSVA in Your Pocket. This is the home screen. Tap the three horizontal lines in the bottom left to see all the menu items. To turn on, push Notifications, tap Settings, select Notification Preferences, and Allow Notifications. Tap Subscriptions to subscribe to your school. The Events section shows a list of events throughout the school. You can use this button to add an event to your calendar or tap here to share the event with friends and family. The Feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on throughout the school, whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search "Manassas City Public Schools" in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. It's Everything MCPSVA in Your Pocket.
Yeah, so we want everybody that's able to go and download the app so that they can stay connected.
Getting set to travel this summer and need a wireless plan that'll keep you connected on the go? Do it with one line and unlimited 5G data, now just $20 a month for two years.
There we go. Good old YouTube. So, we want everybody to be able to go on to the app, to the App Store, and download the app. That is for everyone, the general public, parents, everyone, all staff can go ahead and download that. But there is another component of the app that is strictly for parents. Like I said, this information, including the video, went out to our families, but, and we're also sharing it on our websites and everything. But there's another component of the app that is called Rooms. And this is the new teacher-to-home communication tool. As I said before, most people are familiar with Remind, and this operates in the same fashion. However, it is tied to our Power School information, so our student information system. So, in this way, parents are able to go in and not only chat with their teachers, with their students' teachers, but also to have all of their students in one location. And I will say that, as I told you before, that this is a brand-new product, but I've already received calls from people today saying that they received the invitation from our host company and already saw their children populating in the app, which was very encouraging to me because, you know, we weren't sure how it was going to work, even though we've seen the demonstrations and things like that. But for it to be real-time and to have people say, "I got it, I understand it," has been very encouraging for today. So, here's a little bit about Rooms. And teachers are able to populate their classes and the parents are able, and students can actually use it as well. But they are able to see all of their students' courses and things. They are able to talk one-on-one with their teacher, just as they did with Remind. It's like a texting fashion, so you don't really have to wait for an email. Now, emails are still good, and people can contact them by email, even through the app. But that one-to-one correspondence, and then they're also able to, teachers are able to blast the whole class if they need to, a larger group of parents if they want to. So, I think it'll be very beneficial to them. Our teachers went through training, and some of the feedback that we got indicated that they felt that it was very good to have everything for them in one platform in one place. Because typically, you have to close apps, open other ones up. And so, the back end is beneficial because they don't even have to have teacher webpages anymore. And that was one of the things that the communications office, that we were always concerned about, with people having to feel like they had multiple pages to keep up with, maybe it had outdated information on it. So, within the Rooms app, they can have their bio there, all of the pertinent information about their work hours, their tutoring, if they offer it, if they have field trips, forms, or anything like that, that they want parents to have quick access to, they can leave it there. So, parents, some have already received. We said that this week, in the email correspondence that we sent out, we told them that this week, they would receive an email from EduRooms is a part of the vendor's platform inviting them to create an account. And so, I was told that those went out. And as I said, people have indicated that they've already gone in and set up their accounts, which is promising. And our teachers are continuing to publish their pages so that parents can see all of their students there in one place. One of the things that I would like to reiterate is that Room, I mean, how people can stay connected, I want people to understand what the purpose of each one of these platforms are. Because even though there's a consolidation of things that makes things easier, not only on the back end with our administrators and the users, the super-users, if you will, but on the parent's side, if they hear some of these terminologies, and this is something that we shared with them on yesterday, Rooms is for classroom two-way communication between home and school. Point-blank period. We want them to understand that that's the purpose of that. Power School is not going away. That is our student information system. And it does feed into Rooms, but it's for reviewing grades and to update contact information, which we need everyone, if your email has changed or phone number has changed, to please go in and make those updates so that they can stay connected and get all the information that they need to get throughout the school year. And then, Schoology is still a platform that we're using for assignments and instructional materials. That is our learning management platform. So, we want everybody to understand that those are the tools that are available to them. If they have questions, they can always reach out to the communications office, to their school front offices, and they can get the support that they need. We're also building out a resource portal for families and staff to be able to go in and do refreshers and make sure that they understand how to navigate through each of these systems. But we're excited about it. We're becoming more fluent in it day by day. And I want people to be able to access it and to really be able to become more engaged in the learning process from both sides of the aisle, that our teachers feel that they are confident in the information that they're sharing, but then also that our families feel that they are well-informed with what's happening within their schools. And that's it. That's our announcement for tonight. And I think I'll be back next time with some great spotlights, so that'll be exciting. I always like being able to present our students when I'm here.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. We're looking forward to using this ourselves and experiencing the improved efficiencies for families and for staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any board committee reports tonight, so we'll move along to citizens' comments. Is there anybody signed up? Nobody signed up? Is there anybody that wishes to speak? I will move along then. Consent agenda.
Chair, I move that the school board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board, the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay. Moving along to our action agenda. We have some old business to discuss. No, wait. Discussion agenda. Discussion agenda. Mr. Taft Kelly, Director of Finance, will present the FY 2026 Draft Budget Development Calendar for School Board Discussion. Welcome, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Chair Seberg, Dr. Newman, members of the board. This is my first of many meetings, many discussions with you all, but I am here to present the fiscal year 2026 Budget Development Calendar. I want to point out that this calendar hasn't changed much from previous years. It's in line with how we've done business before. I will point out a few dates just to point them out. August, October 1st, 2024 will be our first budget work session, where we will discuss the capital improvement plan. We will then have several budget work sessions, as well as several meetings between then and December 10th, when we hope you all will approve the capital improvement plan. Moving on, we'll continue to have budget work sessions and several meetings with a plan to present the approved budget to the city council on April 2nd. And so, you'll notice there are some dates that are to be determined. Those dates will be finalized once the board has the organizational meeting.
Very good.
Any questions or concerns with the dates in hand?
Seeing and hearing none.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Next up is our Department of Transportation Electric Bus Update. Mr. Craig Gafeller, Deputy Superintendent, and Mr. Joe Yankoviac is also here. Director of Transportation will provide an update on electric buses. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, Dr. Newman. Tonight, I will provide an update for you on our use of electric buses. As we get started, I just want to provide an overview of what we currently have. As a reminder, we have been using school buses powered by electric during the 23-24 school year. We had three electric buses. We added those to our fleet last year. We have a total fleet of all of our diesel buses, to include our electric buses as well, of 67 buses in our current fleet. This was a phased-in approach, and we added three buses last year. The plan is to add three buses this year and then six buses for the 25-26 school year. Last year, our electric buses were used in all areas to transport students. They were driven a total of 23,555 miles. I can also report that the drivers of the electric buses have been very pleased with their performance. So, looking ahead to this school year and beyond, we were supposed to receive three additional buses this summer. And the manufacturer, Thomas Bus, who actually manufactures the bus, is expected, was expected at the time that we published this report to you, that they would be coming in December, which would then give us a projected date of January of 2025 to receive three additional buses. But we had a, Mr. Yankoviac had a meeting late this afternoon, and that date has changed. Now, they're looking at delivery of the buses to us towards the end of November of 2024. So, that changed late today. We also have a meeting with the vendor tomorrow and get further clarification in regards to the timing of the bus arrival. The delay is due to a manufacturing delay, a shortage of TBD, TBB inverters, which is a part that affects the battery chargers. And it's a shortage area for the manufacturing. So, I also want to say that although we were planning on having these three buses, we are, there is no delay in our ability to service our students and transport our students. We were able to, we have not surplus any buses, and so, we still have a full fleet. It has not impacted our ability to transport students this school year. Also, just want to mention, in terms of cost, we have not paid for the three buses that we would be receiving. So, there's been no cost that has been incurred by us because we have not received the three buses. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Bresia?
So, thank you for that.
Sure.
So, the fleet, the bus contractor that we have, this is the same bus contractor as Montgomery County, Maryland, correct?
That is correct.
And there's recently been some news out of Montgomery County, Maryland, that they're facing very similar issues, you know, supply issues, buses not being delivered on time. And the reason that's made the news is because it has cost Montgomery County, Maryland, millions of dollars, as they've had to maintain their diesel fleet, replace diesel buses, all these things that they weren't planning on doing.
Sure.
And so, that makes, yeah, I'm, so I'm concerned about if they're not doing it for Montgomery County, Maryland, you know, how much attention that we here in Manassas City are going to be getting. They are a much larger client, obviously, across the Potomac.
Correct.
So, can you tell me a little bit more about the conversations that you've had? So, in case there's any information you've received that might be relevant to share there about how we rank in their priorities?
I cannot, in terms of how we rank in their priorities, I think that they are, we have a contract with them. We have, as we stated when we entered into the contract, we have two ways out of our contract. We have a contract termination for cause, which would allow us to terminate our contract. We also have another part of the contract if we chose to at will. And so, we would be allowed to terminate that. We would have to give the vendor a 10-day notice. And so, those are opportunities that we have, that we're not committed to the current contract if we foresee issues down the road. And so, those are all going to be part of our discussion that we're having with them tomorrow in terms of the way forward. There are benefits to each of those options if we decide to stop working with the current vendor with electric buses.
So, what are those options?
Well, it would be if we decided to terminate with cause, those allow us to recuperate or recover some of the costs that we have incurred, the cause by the delay. That is not the same as if we were to cause, if we were to terminate at will. We would not have the ability to recover any of those costs.
And these are leases. We do not own these buses.
We do not own the buses, correct? They're 15-year leases.
So, we would turn the buses. So, if we terminate, is there a difference in what would happen to the buses if we terminated them at cause or if we, they just go back to the company?
No, that's a separate issue. So, in the contract, there are two, we could decide to, with the, if we were to terminate based on cause, we would allow the vendor to cure the cause, right, before we decided to terminate. If we decided to, we were going to no longer enter, remain in the contract with electric buses, what we would have, we could have the option to work out a deal with the vendor to purchase the buses. And that would be a negotiation that would have to occur between us and the vendor. Or we could also say, "We don't want the buses." They would then take the buses back. They would also remove the charging stations at their cost.
Okay. So, it sounds like there is, as I suspected going into this conversation, that there is a wide variety of considerations.
Correct.
And that terminating the contract is not necessarily cheaper or easier than continuing with the contract.
Correct.
I mean, my overall concern that I already shared is watching the company's performance in Montgomery County, Maryland does not give me a lot of confidence, and I want to protect the interests, obviously, of Manassas City, you know, taxpayers, students, families, all that kind of thing. So, going into your future discussions with the company, I do want to make sure that there's at least one, you know, that there is, that there is some trepidation over, at least on my part, with continuing with them. And I don't want to be in a position where just because we've made one decision that we don't, that we feel overly committed. You know, as you said, we do have two ways out, if you want.
Sure, correct. And I would say that that's, when we went into the contract, I know Mr. Hawkins was here and made it very clear that there were, there was a way out within that contract. So, that was made very clear from the beginning.
It can sometimes be hard to get, you know, especially if people are excited about the buses.
Sure.
And as everybody, as everybody is, they do make a nice, like, humming sound as they come in.
Right.
I watch them come in.
Yes.
You know, I don't want us to be afraid to exercise that option. So, are we going to get an additional update on this, costing out all of these options at some point?
We would, we would bring it back to the board, yes.
So, I will. I would very much look forward to that. And I think that's my last question. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
One simple question. Above and beyond any regular maintenance on the electric buses, have we had any issues or have they been functioning as they should?
They have been functioning. I mean, there's been issues we've had. We've had, we had, Mr. Yankoviac could answer it better than I could, but I am aware of. We had one, one bus that broke down. We had to bring it back, had to service it. They couldn't replicate the problem. It went on to normal operation. We've had some coolant issues. We've had other, other issues, but I don't believe there's been anything major.
Okay.
That have occurred with them.
Thank you. Mrs. Fall is next.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. We're talking right now, three buses, six buses, if we have delivery on time in November, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, one-tenth of our fleet. We have not overextended ourselves in any way.
Correct.
And we have maintained our buses so that we're not in a precarious situation where we need to have these buses.
Correct.
Because we are looking forward for cost savings, but also maintenance saving issues, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we're also, I should also mention that we are expecting a rebate check. The, there was an EPA Green Energy grant that the vendor received, and as part of our contract, we receive a portion of that. So, it's about $100,000 we'll be receiving, that we are expecting a check any day.
Okay. And so, when we're fully committed, it's still 20% of our fleet. We, we're not making a drastic change at this point in time, correct?
Correct.
And you've been happy, Mr. Yankoviac, with your discussions so far?
I have, yeah.
Okay. And our bus drivers love driving the buses, correct?
Yeah, I had the opportunity to ride with one of our bus drivers, and he is excited about driving it, so.
Okay. I mean, so, as far as we know, it's always great to be prepared for the future, but we're all systems go right now.
Correct.
This is a hiccup.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the update. If we chose to end the contract and return the buses to the vendor, would we still have enough buses or would we be short?
We have enough buses currently. We would have to purchase additional buses as they get to the end of life, but that would be a discussion that we would have to include as part of the budget process for upcoming school years.
But talking about replacing buses when they reach the end of their lives, that's, that would not be considered, and correct me if I'm wrong, that would not be considered an unplanned-for expense, for lack of a better term, because that was- an unplanned for expense, for lack of a better term, because that was something, until we started working on getting electric buses, that was a normal occurrence, was to always plan for X number of buses needed to be, needing to be replaced on a regular schedule, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Because in looking at the issue with Montgomery County, what happened to Montgomery County was in October of 2023, the school board for Montgomery County, which is also MCPS, but a very different MCPS, they had to buy 90 diesel buses.
Right.
Because their commitment and buy-in for the electric buses was much larger than ours.
Correct.
And so that's what cost them an additional 14.7 million, and I think that's what we want to make sure. I mean, obviously, we have 67 buses, so we wouldn't ever need 90 buses, or hopefully ever 67. So our price tag would be much smaller, but I want to make sure that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we are purchasing buses where we had not previously allocated money for those buses.
Right, correct. Yeah, and Mr. Yan Kobyak and I have had, have had discussions around, you know, future budget years and looking at what that looks like and planning out, you know, when we need to purchase buses, and so that wouldn't be a surprise for us.
Okay. Because I think, you know, $14.7 million is a, is a very good piece of money, and that would hit this school division quite hard.
Correct.
But I, as I recall through all the conversations leading up to the contract for the buses, we were going slowly.
Correct.
In very small steps to ensure that we didn't get to a point where we had this sudden unplanned price tag hanging over our shoulders.
Yes. Yeah, we wanted to go slow, and also because we wanted to make sure that we included an out in the contract for us. So, and that those are included.
Thank you. And then, once you have an update after tomorrow's meeting, you will share it with us.
Yes.
And share the options for moving forward if there are indeed larger issues around the contract.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for the update.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Cuffeller, and Mr. Yan Kobyak. Thank you.
Moving along to our action agenda. During the regular business meeting on February 27th, 2024, Mrs. Breja made a motion for the board to consider resolution R 2024-03, recurring attendance reports. The motion requires the division superintendent to prepare and present a brief summary of the attendance data at the final regular meeting of each month during the school year. This agenda item was postponed from February 27th with an approval to move it to August 13th, this meeting, for discussion and voting by the board. Mrs. Breja, would you care to restate the motion?
Sure. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve resolution R 2024-03, recurring monthly attendance reports.
Sir, second?
I have a motion by Mrs. Breja, second by Mrs. Williams, to approve resolution R 2024-03, recurring attendance reports. Is there any discussion?
I have a couple of questions.
Vice Chair?
Thank you. We've got three points in the motion, whereas the city of Manassas Board seeks strong family and community partnerships as part of the 2027 strategic plan, and whereas the Manassas City School Board has set to improve attendance as a priority, as presented to the city council on June 29th, 2023. I did, and I'll read number three, whereas the Manassas City School Board has authority to issue guidance to the division superintendent in accordance with these goals. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board of the city of Manassas directs the division superintendent to prepare and present a brief summary of attendance data for the previous month at the final regular meeting of each month during the school year beginning the month following the approval of the motion. The summary shall present data by school and shall provide a comparison to the corresponding data from the previous year. I had a question about the second whereas, where improve attendance is a priority, that was presented to the city council. We very much so want to ensure that we improve attendance, because we know when students are in school, they're more likely to succeed, graduate on time, be college and career ready. My question is, how does presenting attendance data improve student attendance?
I can actually answer that question with an analogy, if you bear with me. So I was, I was not anticipating your question, I'd prepared a persuasive argument for everybody here, but one thing that this measure reminds me of upon reflection is, and bear with me, because it is an analogy, I promise it will make sense, the Challenger disaster in January of 1986. And now, what does this have to do with that? I'll say, first of all, that attendance is critical to our mission. We can do, as you were just alluding to, we can do all sorts of things, we can cycle that works, we can professionally develop, we can revamp our course offerings, but if kids are not in school, none of it matters. So attendance is a foundational piece, and we recognize that in our various documents, our strategic plan, and our presentations to city council. In order for us to do our job as a governance team, which includes setting the budget, developing policies, providing guidance to the superintendent, duties that do have the power to impact attendance, I believe we do need to have a full, accurate, and ongoing grasp of our attendance situation. So this is where the analogy comes in. The Challenger explosion in January 1986 is obviously famous in its own right, but it's also famous for a secondary reason, since essentially, the moment it happened, the incident has been studied by various academics regarding the decision-making process that led to the launch. Because, well, we all know now that the launch should never have happened, but how did it come to pass? How did a team of experts make such a catastrophic decision? As it turns out, there were people in the organization who knew it was dangerous to launch that day. The engineers, whose job it was to work with the solid rocket boosters, which were the component that ultimately failed, knew that those O-rings did not perform in temperatures below 50 degrees Fahrenheit, and it was 36 degrees in Florida that day. And those engineers, at first, refused to sign off on the launch, but their manager, in the middle of the organization, well, his job was to launch a shuttle. His job was to stick to the schedule, his job was to preserve the contract with NASA, and he made it clear that the news those engineers had to share was not the news that he wanted to hear, because not being able to launch that day, that would have been bad news. It would not have been welcomed by his superiors, and canceling the launch, that would have been very public, and it would have been very embarrassing. And so that crucial information stopped with him. By the time mission control was making the final go, no-go decision, they had no idea of the risk they were taking. Mission control did not have the information it needed to make a good decision. And I want to note that this middle manager, who is still alive today, he was not a villain, he made a rational decision. Human beings are social animals, we generally aim to please, we generally try to minimize confrontation and minimize embarrassment, normal people do that anyway. And this dynamic was discussed by the keynote speaker at the November 22 VSB conference, if we all take a moment to remember that presentation. We also touched on it at the retreat this year with our fierce conversations. Unless an organization and the individuals within it are very deliberate about the internal flow of communication, these kind of snags occur. And the truth about our particular organization is that we have our conversations in public. That's just the reality of elected office. And the public decision-making nature of this job is tough. I, I know the pain of that as well as anyone on this dais. We all have to go through the same process to get here, to earn these seats. But even though these, this is tough, it is necessary to have this public conversation and to not be afraid of that. So I think we should take this opportunity to have the fierce conversation about attendance. Attendance is mission-critical data, it informs everything else we do. We need to understand it in order to inform our other decisions. And the only way we can fully digest it as a group is by including it in our meetings. So I do ask that we pass this tonight.
Dr. Newman?
I want to start off by saying I don't have a say or preference on what happens with this resolution, but I do want to put it out on record that everything, almost everything in that resolution that is being asked for in a public setting, I share with the board every month during the department meeting where attendance is presented to this board. So I don't want anyone to think that the analogy is speaking to anyone in my office or myself holding any information back to save face. That attendance data is presented to this board every month with a comparison to where each school was at the previous year, based on that month's data. So I just want that to be very clear. Again, however this vote goes, we will speak to it, whether it's publicly or continuing to do it during the monthly department meetings, but I just wanted to be very clear that we share attendance data with this board.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Spall?
I just want to say that while I do appreciate and agree with the Challenger analogy, we are not launching rockets, we are trying to teach kids. And we are, in my opinion, holding kids accountable and staff accountable for family responsibilities or health issues when we try to put them on blast every month during a meeting. So, you know, in my, in my opinion, and it's only one, we live in, you know, pockets of low-income areas where many students miss school due to family responsibilities or health issues. And a public attendance report might highlight the high absenteeism rate without explaining these or other underlying causes. As a result, one of our schools could be unfairly labeled as underperforming, leading to decreased community support and funding, which in turn makes it even harder for the school to address the root causes of the absenteeism. While transparency and accountability are important, it's crucial to me to balance these with the potential negative impacts on students, teachers, and schools. A private report to school board members is already happening and allows the schools to provide context and ensure data privacy, which are essential steps in mitigating risks. You know, I do think that I was one of the people, or maybe the person, that asked to delay this vote, but I think that until we get some more scrubbed data on VDOE, from VDOE, I'm just not ready to make this what I consider to be a pretty drastic move. For me, it's not never, but it's definitely not now. And I, you know, I'd like to find a better way to do it, even if it happens later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Ms. Breja, thank you for sharing your analogy. I, I am a little bit concerned about it, though, because one of the things that I distilled from it, and, and I was taking notes as you were speaking, was you spoke to a lack of crucial information to allow people to make a proper decision in the instance of the Challenger. I don't want anyone to think that our school, our central office staff, our administrators, our attendance officers aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing, and aren't working in the best interest of all our students, and that attendance reports need to be delivered monthly to the school board because they're not doing their job. We do get updates periodically on the efforts our attendance teams are making to ensure that our kids are going to school, and some of the challenges and burdens they experience, but I don't want anybody to believe that they're not doing the best they can every day if they're not reporting to us. We do get a monthly update on attendance. It is a part of the internal flow of conversation on a regular basis at the school level, at the division level, and once a month, when we get the updates from Dr. Newman. I feel that I would be more in favor of sharing attendance data on a quarterly basis, because they do concern, do have concerns that misinformation comes out when we share data without having a full explanation of what the data means, without people having a full understanding of what the data means. I don't want to see families, parents, students shamed because of attendance issues. I'll speak to my own child. I have a child who gets sick at least twice a year. When she gets sick, she misses anywhere from five to 10 days of school because she runs a fever. I don't want her to feel like she should be shamed because she's a chronic absenteeism student, because we got that letter that she had more than five days of absences. I don't want people to think that they need to send their children to school if their children are sick, because I've seen it happen in other schools. I've seen it happen in private schools, where parents give their kids Tylenol before school and say, shh, don't tell anybody, you need to be in school. So I don't want to see what the possible negatives are, and I don't want people to assume that something is being hidden because it's not being shared during a regular business meeting. Thank you.
Mrs. Brooks?
I, I do share that concern as well, but my, one of my concerns is also the tasking that it's putting on our central office and our staff to constantly bring these, you know, reports up here and make presentations when their focus would be on reducing absenteeism if, you know, it's just one more thing that they have to try and focus on to take them away from things that will improve attendance. So I, I mean, you just, I feel like it's getting in the weeds a bit. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams, did you have comment?
No, thank you.
All right. My comments are the same as they were back in February, and I'll read some of them. And I'll argue that attendance is already measured, and we are very deliberate about it. It's analyzed, and action is taken by the professionals responsible for it, teachers, attendance office officers, social workers, counselors, each school's admin teams, student achievement departments, student services department, ultimately, the superintendent. It's the superintendent's responsibility to manage the schools on a day-to-day basis, and this includes attendance. And in our role as school board members, we ultimately hold Dr. Newman responsible for day-to-day operations. This request goes beyond that, and it makes it public for others to comment and reflect on, perhaps negatively. Making this information public could cause ill will among students and staff in our schools and the community at large.
Are we ready for a vote?
I have more to say. So first, I would like to say that if the board preferred a quarterly report, I would be fine with that. That was kind of thrown out there, but not really discussed. So how do other people feel about a quarterly update instead of a monthly update?
That's something I said I would be open to discuss. My, my concern still lays in just putting the data out without a full explanation of data every time it's presented. And my concern then goes to Ms. Brooks' concern that we have people who now have to take additional time to perform additional duties and explain additional data on a very regular basis. But like I said, I'm open to discussing that.
I would be willing to, when a school is already speaking before us, that part of the formula that they talk about has to include where they are on attendance at that moment in time.
Mrs. Breja?
That is, I believe, an annual, I, I don't think we visit, I don't think schools visit us on a quarterly basis, they visit us, yeah, on an annual, that's still, I'm trying to shift us from an annual report to a more frequent report, and I'm willing, you know, quarterly report I'd be totally fine with, but it sounds like you're not okay, you, you still want to keep the annual report.
I prefer to make that decision at a later time. There are a couple other factors that I'm looking at, in terms of SOL and things like that, to see how our kids are performing, you know, they're already trying. I think our staff is already trying. I, I don't think anybody's holding anything back in trying to get our kids to school, and we know that we can teach our kids when they are at school. So I just don't think that it's, it's, it's not the highest priority for me. I don't think quarterly is necessarily, if that's the will of the board, I could go with it, but that's not necessarily what I think needs to happen right now. I think there are other areas that have my attention.
All right, I'm going to repeat the motion. I have a motion by Ms. Breja, seconded by Mrs. Williams at the school board, the city of Manassas, approve resolution R-
The City of Manassas approve Resolution R. Two thousand twenty four oh three recurring attendance reports. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. I would like to address some of the, you know, the points that were brought up and just in my own defense. I'm not trying to shame anybody, never. But we have issues like anybody, like any division does in the post-COVID era. And I'd like to remind my colleagues here that this idea was not, you know, dreamed of one night while I was sleeping. I attended a VSBA, the VSBA conference, and as part of that, there was a breakout session on attendance best practices. They presented two ideas. We're already doing one of them, and I thought it would be worthwhile to pursue this second one. So this is not an exotic, unusual item that I am offering here. And I did not mean to at all, of course, insinuate with this analogy that there is anything nefarious going on and that information is not being shared. I should have made that point finer, that it's not so much that the information is shared, it's that the group can discuss. Yeah, the, there are two parts that, we learned this in our fierce conversations training. The conversation is the power. The conversation is the engine. If the conversation does not happen, it does, nothing moves forward, and that's our jobs. We are elected officials. You know, we do not manage the day-to-day operations of the school. We are the oversight body for the schools. And it is not, it is not a totally unusual thing to ask for more information on a particular point that is important to us and that we have historic, historically shown some weakness in. But I would also like to open the door to the possibility that what we will be showcasing this school year is success. You know, by slamming this door, by not broadcasting this, most of our schools, as we saw, as we're going to see in our annual report, did have an improvement. Most of them did. And that denies that opportunity as well. And it denies us as a governance team the ability to have the conversation, okay, why is it working here, but it's not working there? What is it about the policies we've passed, the budget we've set? Why are these inequities happening within our system? Bringing this information onto the table for us to discuss, which is the only power that we have as elected officials, is to discuss, to make that budget and to make those policies. It denies those shining stars as well.
Mrs. Spall.
Yes. Um, first of all, I want to say that I love new ideas, and I love when people bring back things that they've learned at VSBA. So I want to make a nod to that. In, in the scenario that we would be entering this school year with, we do have all but one school that made great strides last year. And so for me, you know, just making it very personal, that, that's a brand-new principle that I don't think, you know, I mean, we need to give that, that one person some time to show us her stuff. And I don't think that it's fair to parade her over and over again, you know, because it is an easy win right now. And it just looks a little, it feels a little performative to me because we're, we're doing the right things. I mean, and, um, and, and good things are happening as a result of our diligence. So um, for me, I don't know that I think that the school board's place in a public venue is the time or the place to talk about why something's working here and not there. I mean, that just is exactly what I'm trying to avoid. Celebrations I'm all about. I certainly am not trying to hide anything when it's negative, but we got to give people a chance. And I think that we're making huge strides, and it, those are easy things to celebrate anywhere, almost any time. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty four oh three?
Aye.
Opposed? Show of hands, please. The motion fails. Brooks, Spall, Stevens, and Seberg opposed. Moving along to school board members' comments, and I'll call first on Mrs. Spall.
Great. I would like to say welcome to Ms. Johnson, that I'm excited about everything M C P S in your pocket. I did check today that schedule, and a couple things hadn't come up just yet. So I would like to take the opportunity to say eight fifteen is a volleyball game at Osborne. Eight sixteen is a field hockey scrimmage. J V. Five thirty. Eight twenty one is senior night for parents. Go seniors. I guess it's called senior parent night. Eight twenty nine, first home football game. That's it. Welcome back, everyone. I, I would like to say, I think anybody that follows on Facebook knows, but at Georgetown South, I went to back to school in the morning to make sure that the kids were crossing. I didn't think that, you know, the police wouldn't do a good job or anything else, but just to interact with the kids. And I want to report, just every single person stopped willingly, quickly, giving the kids plenty of time. Every child told me they were excited to be back to school. Nobody didn't do what we asked them to do. It was a very wonderful experience. Every Met student did what they were supposed to do. Every Osborne student did what they were supposed to do, and it was just a really nice morning. And I could not speak more highly of the kids that were just trying to get to school. There's not one incident that I can talk about, and I'm very appreciative to them for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Brezha.
Thank you. I do want to welcome everybody back to school. It is, from a parent perspective, I will say, very nice to be back. But I want to, I want to talk a little bit about what is coming in front of us in the coming weeks. In the coming weeks, we will be receiving our official data from the twenty-three twenty-four school year regarding our attendance, graduation, information, SOL performance, and all the various other accreditation metrics on which we are measured. And as everybody just heard, my analogy to the Challenger explosion, I want to just make it clear when those, when that data comes out, I do intend to be asking some tough questions about what we're seeing and why. And it is not because I want anyone to be shamed or embarrassed or that I just love to be negative or anything like that. I want, I am asking those questions because I want these schools, the schools my own children attend and will attend until two thousand forty-two, I want these schools to be successful. And I do not want us to be shy about digging in and getting the full range of information that we need. If we go back to the Challenger analogy, there was nobody in that chain of command who wanted that shuttle to explode. There was nobody there. These were all well-intended experts. And unless you are very conscious about moving against the natural human tendency to, you know, agree and minimize that confrontation, big mistakes can happen. And so I want to, I just want that to be clear. That's why I'm doing it. I want us to be successful. This is my contribution to that. I want our governance team to have the information it needs, even when the information is unpleasant, to make the best and most strategic decisions for our kids and our community. It is tough to do that alone, honestly, and it is my hope that us as a group can do that, dig in and have that fierce conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brezha. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I hope everyone had a fantastic summer, and I just want to welcome the students and staff, both new to the family and those returning. Welcome back. I'm excited to see what happens this upcoming school year. And football's right around the corner. I went to the scrimmage, the family scrimmage, the lawn scrimmage, and it was nice that the scrimmage was actually on the real football field and not out on the practice field. So it was a great, great beginning of the entire school year. I feel like the marching band and, and everything that all these students have been working so hard for in the summer. We're about ready to see the show. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks.
I too want to say welcome back, everyone, students, staff, everyone who's working so hard in our schools, parents. Thanks for getting, doing a good job. Kids were so happy yesterday. I had the pleasure of going around to all the schools, some of them with, at the opening and some right after. Dr. Newman and it was, and Mr. Gaffel. And it was, it was just wonderful to see all the excitement, all the positive energy. And, um, you know, we, we, we're doing a great job, and I know we're going to keep working hard to ensure that the schools are great and that the kids are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Welcome back to a new school year. We just started yesterday. I heard lots of happy voices. I just wanted to give a couple reminders, folks. When you're out driving, either in the morning or the afternoon, please watch out for school buses that are stopped, putting kids on, getting kids off. Watch out for walkers and our car riders. They're kids. They may not see you. Keep your eyes open, be aware. And please remember, it is the law to stop for a school bus when it has the stop sign out in the flashing lights. And our school buses are all equipped with cameras that will automatically take a picture of any cars that do not stop for the stop sign. I also wanted to remind folks that sometimes the change for a new school year can be stressful. And it's not unusual for us as parents, as teachers, and our children to be under stress when the school year first starts because it is a big change. Give everyone time to adjust to the change, get used to the new routine, and get ready to enjoy the year. And if you find that you or your child are struggling emotionally, please reach out to the school. Our school counselors can provide you all the support you need, and if you need more support than they can provide, they can direct you to someone who can provide the best support. So good luck, have a safe school year, and have a fun school year.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
I will also say welcome back to school. It was very heartwarming to be out greeting students and staff on the first day of school. Beautiful day. A reminder to all parents that this first week, teachers are getting to know your student. They're setting expectations for the classroom and reinforcing school rules and the code of conduct. It is helpful if you talk about and reinforce them with your children as well. With your help and support, it's going to be a great year, and we appreciate your partnership. I also wanted to mention that Manassas City Public Schools is going to have a team for the Out of the Darkness Walk on Sunday, September eighth. This walk brings awareness and raises support for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. If you would like to join us on the walk or donate to this cause, please search for the Out of the Darkness Walk in Manassas and search Teams for Manassas City Public Schools. And with that, it concludes my comments.
Chair, I move that the school board meeting adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board meeting adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.